Okay, at 6:30 PM, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Renee, can I please have a roll call?
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mr. McDaniel, Ms. McCowen, Mr. Parker, Ms. Byrd.
Here.
Mr. McClure.
Here.
Mr. Griffith.
Here.
Ms. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Moving to our consent docket, starting with item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the September 14th, 2023 Regular Planning Commission meeting. And item number two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2324-5. Consideration of a short form plat submitted by Landmark Storage LLC, Durham Surveying, Inc. For 1010 The Rev for 1.2189 acres of property located at 1010 College Avenue. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket?
I'd like to remove item two.
I second that.
Okay. And so do you want to make a motion to remove that item?
Do I need to, or can we just any commissioner remove it?
Which is removed then. Okay, so then the motion would be to, as a consent item, approve item one only. Could I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the consent docket with item one only.
Okay.
I second that.
End of vote.
Oops. You may vote. Everyone has... The motion carried six to zero.
Okay, since we are moving on to non-consent items, I'm gonna reread item number two. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2324-5. Consideration of a short form plat submitted by Landmark Storage LLC, Durham Surveying, Inc. For 1010 The Rev for 1.2189 acres of property located at 1010 College Avenue. And I would take a staff presentation if we have one. We didn't have a specific staff presentation. Are there questions of staff by the commission? Maybe can give some clarification for removing?
Yeah, I just wanted to remove this because I looked at the preliminary plat. And it seems to be going in the opposite direction of other infill development. It looks like they're cutting down several trees. And when I look at this, it looks like a concrete jungle. It seems like there's no balance between the parking spaces and having natural features like trees. And that's what stood out to me. And I just wanted to pull it out to make that comment to the commission.
Is the applicant present? Do you have a presentation you'd like to make, or would you like to come up and maybe answer some questions for commission?
Well, I guess I'll try and phrase it in the form of a question. Thank you for being here. So like I said, when I pulled this up with the agenda, it looks like just a massive parking lot behind the building. And I didn't see places for trees on the plat. I know it's a preliminary plat, but still that stood out to me.
Yes, sir. We do have green space in front of the building for trees. The back is primarily parking. We have some recreation area built into the building footprint for the students to recreate in. But we do have the green space on the, would be the east side of the building, front of the building.
And so it looks like you're removing eight trees on the south end of the property, but I don't see where you're adding any trees to the property. Am I misreading that?
Yeah, I mean, we would put the required trees along the front. We are, we will be removing those trees that you've mentioned though for the parking.
Commissioner Jablonsky, Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group represent Landmark. This is a short form plat, and so the standard review is different from what you usually see when we come for you with a site plan. And so you probably don't have the specifics of the site you would otherwise see at like a spud level. That's because it gets locked in at the zoning. This is really just an administrative review of the kind of utilities and the traffic. And so it is not nearly as designed as what you would see when we come forward. And so I think, not that you didn't answer perfectly, but a lot of those details get flushed out a little more when there's no rezoning involved at a later kind of final development stage. So that's probably why, not to be mean to Chris Anderson in the back there, but engineers aren't as pretty as Sean Rieger and the architect team. And so engineers put these together and they just really bubble plan and max out concrete. So it's probably what you see in there. At final design, they want to make sure that it looks premium and is sellable at the market. And so it's very likely you'll see something that Landmark is more used to doing, which is the premier development that they do.
I had the same concern, and I just want to say I feel like that answered my question. So I appreciate you both together answering those questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Are there any audience comments on this item? Seeing none, are there any other planning commission discussion? I think that was a good observation about not necessarily having a zoning change for this one, so. Okay, seeing none, unless there's any other discussion, I would take a motion.
I move to approve item two.
End of second.
I'll second it.
End of vote.
You may vote. Everyone? Motion carried five to one.
Okay. Moving to item number three. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-19. Emmanuel Inguerra, so sorry, requests amendment of the spud O-2021-39. Simple planned unit development for property located at 119 and 117 East Acres Street. And the staff presentation, please.
Melissa Navarro with the Planning Department. We have an application from Emmanuel Inguerra to amend the simple planned unit development O-202119 for the property located at 119 and 117 East Acres Street. This is the existing zoning. You see the subject property is surrounded by residential properties. R2 in the northeast and west, and R3 in the south. This is the existing land use, housing surrounded all the property and a little bit denser in the south of the property. This is the site. This is before it was developed. It consists of three parcels. This is an aerial of the property already developed. You can see they have three main dwellings and three garage apartments on the rear of the properties. The subject property we are going to be talking about is this one on the east, which are addressed 117 and 119 East Acres. This is looking at East Acres on the west. This is the front of the subject property. This is looking east. This is on the alleyway. This is looking west. And this one is looking east. This is the site development plan. The subject properties are part of a SPOD approved as ordinance O-2021-29. The spot is located at 109, 111, which is the first property on the west. 113 and 115, which is the property in the middle, and 117 and 119 East Acres Street, which is the subject property. The applicant bought the property on the east, the one I just mentioned, 117 and 119, and is asking to add short-term rental to the allow use list for this parcel only. Short-term rentals are allowed in all residential zoning districts, but was not included in the initial application for this spot. Staff forwards this request for a simple planned unit development and ordinance O-2324-19 to Planning Commission for your consideration. The applicant representative is here and has prepared a presentation for you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant's presentation if there is one.
Thank you.
Good evening. Travis Dennis of Plainview Legal Group on behalf of the applicant. So originally back, I think like in 2009, this property was vacant. It was dilapidated. I believe Mr. McCabe bought it with the intention of splitting it up into three parcels with ADUs attached to increase the housing units in the area. The Planning Commission approved Mr. McCabe's plan back in 2021. He sold it shortly thereafter, and then my client bought it in April with the intention of using the main building and the ADU for split long-term and short-term rentals. He tried to get a short-term rental license and immediately found out that he couldn't because the spud narrative doesn't include short-term rentals as an allowable use. It was previously residential R2. That's perfectly allowable in that zone. But because of spuds only allowed the specifically enumerated uses on the property, he was unable to get that short-term rental license at this time. And so immediately we began the process of rezoning to try to amend the spud narrative. Any questions?
Any questions by commission for the applicant? Seeing none, are there any audience comments? Or any other planning commission discussion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
End of vote, please.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Moving to item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-21. Dr. Greg Emmerich requests special use for a bar lounge or tavern for 0.34 acres of property located for McGee Drive. This item has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we won't be hearing it, and we'll be moving to the next item. Moving to the next two items to hear together, items five and six. Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-22. City of Norman requests rezoning from PUD O-0809-1 to spud simple planned unit development for 4.99 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue. And item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-7. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by the City of Norman. SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Crimson Flats, a simple planned unit development for 4.99 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue. And I will take the staff's presentation.
So we have an application from the city... Oh, sorry, Laura Hoggatt with the Planning Department. We have an application from the City of Norman for a simple planned unit development for 4.99 acres at the northeast corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue for a multifamily housing development. I think maybe our slides are... Okay, I guess our slides didn't make it in. Can I use yours? I'm sorry. Okay, so the current zoning is a PUD. It was also for a multifamily development. Since then, we've adopted the spud ordinance, and we have a new applicant, which will be us. There is no change proposed for the 2025. So Anthony will probably go over this, but there is an RFP process and a developer was chosen. So he'll go over the site plan and all of that. I'm really sorry. We had a mix-up of who was doing what. So I'm available for questions if you have any. And then Anthony from the legal department will be doing a presentation with more info.
Go ahead. Questions for the staff?
Well, I have a question. You know, I apologize. I just read the agenda this morning, and so I didn't have a chance. This is a question you probably should have gotten in advance. So it looks like there's something about a hers rating, H E R S, with a maximum of 80% or 80 or something. And I was just curious, you know, how this compares to new construction in the city. That's my question. Maybe the developer can answer that better.
We're gonna table that one for the applicant. That's a great question. Any other questions for staff? I'm gonna ask a few that I'm sure you don't know the answer to, but if you happen to know. So I saw we had this originally plotted Crimson Creek East in 2008. And if I read the agenda correctly, May 2023, the city acquired the property, and it looks like the intent is affordable housing. Is there anything you can tell me about the history of how the city acquired the property, why it's changing now, why there was an RFP to give a little context for this?
Anthony will go over that.
Okay. All right. Well, we will hear from the applicant unless there's any other questions for staff. Thank you. Okay, and we would take the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. Anthony Purinton, Assistant City Attorney for the City of Norman. Both a staff presentation and an applicant presentation, considering I am both. But again, I want to kind of back it up a little bit and introduce you to Crimson Flats, which is the development proposed for the site. And I think some of your questions were geared toward, I think, the background. And so I'll go ahead and go into that. And I think that's important to kind of contextualize what we're asking for in this property. So the city did buy this property. It was actually back in January that we acquired it. We did do the RFP process around May. The reason we acquired this property was for an affordable housing development. The city council allocated 6.4 million to be used from its ARPA allocation to be used for that purpose. During the course of staff deciding how to use that allocation, we, with our partnership with Norman Affordable Housing Corporation, got wind of a property that they thought would be a really great location for a new construction affordable housing development. So we looked into that property. We discovered that in 2008, city council approved a spud for a senior affordable housing development on that parcel. So, and we looked at, you know, into the QTC. We just, you know, after evaluating that property, we thought it would be a really great location to do something with. So the city bought it using its ARPA allocation. Then we issued an RFP seeking a developer who could develop the property and get federal funding in order for it to be built as an affordable housing development. And that is the co-applicant, Milestone Properties LLC, or Milestone Development. And so that is why we have two applicants and the city is one of them. The previous owner, like I said, it was a PUD. This was before the spud ordinance. And it was a senior affordable housing project. For some reason, that did not get developed. I think maybe some funding fell through or something to that effect. It was also for a 75-unit housing development. We have kept the unit number, so we're trying to keep that 75-unit. And as you can see, this is surrounding a lot of, at least to the north, some residential property. If you look to the east of the property, or sorry, the west of the property, you will notice that there is another PUD to the east. That was recently approved by city council, and that is going to be a single-family development, single-family housing. But it is with a lot of really narrow lot lines, which is kind of, again, geared towards to be a more affordable housing development that has a little bit lower cost for purchase. So that is one of the reasons why we thought that this property was a really, really great candidate for the city to purchase for use for use of its ARPA dollars. So I'll get into a little bit about what the actual development is going to look like. So this is the green space exhibit. This was something that was important to the city. We wanted to maximize green space where we could. This is an increase of green space from the previous zoning, the previous PUD. It's 43% green space, which we were very happy with. And as you can see, that is mostly in the middle of the property where, in a preliminary plat, you'll see that that is dedicated to a detention pond. We also, of course, this is Norman, we wanted to make sure that the drainage was properly addressed in this development. We have some, you know, other detention ponds across from Oakhurst Drive. I think there is a drainage area behind the church that is to the east. So that was another one of our main concerns going in this, and we wanted that addressed adequately in whatever development we chose. I also want to point out that as a part of this development, we are widening Imhoff Road, and that's consistent with the other development. It's already been widened in other sections along the same stretch of road. But what I'm most excited about probably is the site plan. Like I said, the city issued an RFP in May, and we got several different... We got six total applicants as a part of that process. And we were excited about that because we actually got to choose the development we wanted to go forward with. And the reason we chose this one was for basically the same reason why we think that the spud is something that you guys should approve. So if you notice to the very north of the property, and if you kind of hearken back to some of the pictures of the surrounding area, north of this property is a single-family neighborhood. What you have at the top of the development here are all single-family cottages that have sharing walls, and there are clusters of buildings. This is one of the main reasons why we chose this application is because the design was intentionally tailored to fit into the community, which again, is one of the considerations for a PUD. So this fit in very nicely with what we wanted to see in this area. And it gradually slopes the actual height of the building to match more closely with the neighborhood to the north. What some of the, you know, proposals had was a three-story apartment building being built right up next to the back door of these neighboring properties with balconies looking into their backyard. We did not want that. So this was the only, or the best proposal that we saw that actually was very intentional in making sure that the development was in line with what we see in the community. So you also have two two-story buildings with apartment units. A lot of the other proposals tried to maximize, I think, some of, you know, they went higher rather than out. And so we didn't like the three- And so we didn't like the three-story mix. So we, we did like the two-story, uh, building limit here. And then as an actual requirement of the RFP, the city did require that, or at least gave credit for any proposal that was, uh, including a storm shelter that the residents could use. And so that's the, one of the buildings that you see here on the site plan. So, um, we really, really liked, uh, this proposal, and we think that it was the best design overall. And, uh, this application, this developer was, um, ultimately, who was actually here today. I should have also introduced him. Uh, so he is also available for questions. His name is Tom Gordon, Milestone Property Development. And so if you have any questions for him, specifically probably more geared toward the design, he's more than happy to answer any questions you guys have. I do wanna get into the permitted uses for this site. Uh, we did narrow it down quite a bit from what, uh, you know, is in the comp plan for like, you know, multifamily or, you know, uh, residential zoning. We have five, uh, uses, which is already included. So no new uses are added as a part of this, um, request for the zoning. So, um, to get into the spud narrative, um, this is kind of a highlight of what the spud narrative has. So again, this is for an affordable housing development. And we wanted to make sure that it is required to, one, uh, comply with Norman's, uh, uh, visibility program. And two, achieve a hers rating of at least 80, which is, um, standard in new construction. I think that probably, um, is in excess of, uh, what would be required. I, I'm not for sure exactly on what the minimum amount would be. But that is something that is also, uh, when you get into federal funding and you apply for federal funding, that is something that, uh, is really important. And you can actually get a bonus for that. So that's kinda why we included that. That was one of the, I think, requirements in the RFP, so. We also have, uh, you know, landscaping around the perimeter. There are 75 units total, 11 as the cottages to the north, and then you have the 64 apartment units. The height of the building, it's set for 20 feet for the cottage, 30 feet for the apartment buildings. It is anticipated to be single-phase, but because of the amount of funding and the layering of funding for this project, uh, we did allow some room for the property to be developed in phases if necessary. The 25-feet setbacks, um, and then we also, uh, must conform with office use signage and all commercial lighting standards. Only cutoff fixtures will be used. Uh, there are 100 parking spaces for the development. And, um, another requirement we included in the RFP i- is also gonna make it into the spud. An exterior must be at least 60% brick or stone, and then any remainder being cement-type boards. And again, this is kinda just, um, uh, an overview of, you know, what we've kinda heard from the community. This was, you know, really important to the city that we have an application that we can bring forward to you and city council. That is very intentional in how it was designed and how it fits into the overall community. I think we did a really good job here, considering what we know. We intentionally limited the number as well to the existing zoning, uh, the spud that had a maximum of 75 units. And, you know, based on some of the reports that we got from, uh, our staff reports, uh, we have minimal traffic impact. So that was favorable. And then also, I think this was really important, pre-development, we had that on September 28th. No residents appeared, and we currently stand at 0% protest percentage. No one has currently protested. So I think that is, um, a sign of the strong community support that we have for this project. And I'm very excited to be able to bring this to you guys today. Uh, staffs worked really hard on this one. This is a very exciting project for staff. Um, and I think it's one that the community is very excited about, just in generally. Affordable housing has been a very large item on council's priority list. And I'm really glad that we can bring this forward to you today. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you guys have, either for me or from the developer.
I have one. The second story, uh, that faces the north, uh, toward the residential area that, uh, the property abuts, will there be windows, uh, on that side of the buildings? Both buildings?
I don't think there's actually any. Are you, so if you look, it's the, the one in the.
Particularly the building on the right, the, the block one, lot two, block one.
So are you asking about the, the side of the building that's face, oh, or you'd like the very top of that building?
Yes.
I don't know if that, um, has any windows.
Well, since the concern of the development, uh, not building three-story buildings was, uh, uh, visibility of the residences, the backyards of those residences. I was just wondering if the second story, uh, that's also gonna, uh, face the north, will there be, um, will those apartments be, uh, be able to see in the backyards of the residences? I mean, it's certainly not as much, but.
You know, I'm not sure about that. I don't have, um, specifically like what the height of those windows would be or how, um, what the sightline would be from those windows. I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
Who for that? Thank you.
I'll hand that over to Tom.
Just as a point of clarification, R1, if that's to the north, does allow two stories of height. So just a note for R1 in there.
Good evening, Tom Gorman. Uh, I'm from Bartlesville, 515 Denver Road, if you need that. Good question. First off, I'd like to commend the city. They've done a great job working through this process and, and, uh, these are not easy partnerships to build, and I tell you, we've moved quick and, and efficiently, so. This is affordable housing, but it's also going to be competitive housing for renters. You know, we were trying to provide amenities. We also want things that fit well with the neighborhood, which relates to your question. And, uh, but, you know, units with more windows, you can rent for more money. You know, it's, it's, it's an amenity, and it's, it's attractive to, uh, some people. And the, the thing, so I should back up just a little bit. These are conceptual drawings. We don't have construction documents. You know, we, we, we won't engage an architect to that degree until such time that we have our funding all in place. It's too much money to put it all together. It's not the end of the world if you don't want them there. I, I think in the building that sits in the southwest corner, you know, they're not gonna see over the roof lines of the, of the ones to the north. There is a possibility those two units that would be on the top floor of the, uh, building on the other side could look over those roofs slightly. I don't think they'd be able to see, like, into a backyard, over a fence or anything of that nature. If it's a critical piece, uh, you know, we could, if you wanna put a caveat in it, we could do some sightlines. But I, I, I really don't think you're gonna see into backyards. But if there was a two-story house on the other side, you might be able to see a window in that house. I don't think you'd be able to see the first story windows of the houses to the north, so.
It's something to consider.
It is, yeah. And, um, on, on, I said, these are, it's an amenity to have more windows on the flip side. If we are trying to make all the units the same, then we will not be putting windows on the ends. Because, um, that way, every win, every unit has the same number of windows. And like I said, these are conceptual and not something we've, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, so.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it did. It really did. Thank you.
I have a question that may be for Anthony. In the specificity of a, the PUD narrative, just in the terms of affordable housing, and I understand reference to the visitability ordinance. Also, up until now, I thought that was a visibility ordinance. That's what I, I literally just learned that tonight. So that was something I've learned, is visitability ordinance. Does that have specific definitions as to what affordable housing is? And exactly how affordable is this affordable housing? Cause I think there is a huge range of what can be given that title and, and kinda making sure it's hitting the true intent of what city council was seeking and that there is a parameter there that keeps it within that range.
Yes, and it's a really good question. And I debated whether or not to get into that level of specificity at Planning Commission. But since it is in the spud narrative, I think, you know, in or, we didn't necessarily define it there. But how it will be defined, um, well, let me start by saying how HUD defines affordable housing, right? Affordable housing per HUD standard is no more than 30% of your household income should be going to your housing, uh, costs. So, uh, and how you define affordable housing, uh, you have to take into account, one, the average, uh, median income of the community. So the average median income of Norman, I don't have that number off of my head. I wanna say it's around 50-some-odd thousand dollars, uh, for a, a single person. Basically, you take the average, uh, median income, and then affordable housing is anything from about 60% of that or lower. So that means someone who's making 60% of the average income for the area should only be spending 30% of their income on their housing. So that's where the caps are kinda set at, and that's how it's based on. So nothing over 60%. This project, um, which again, will not be necessarily in the spud documents, but will be within the agreement with, uh, the city as well as the application to get federal funding, will go as low as 30% of the, uh, median income. So, uh, I think every single unit in this, um, development will be affordable. And I would also note that that does go into, that is an affordability period of at least 40 years. So we were very, then that was another thing that was also heavily stressed in the RFP. And we also heavily, um, you know, graded every other proposals based on, one, the housing needs of Norman. So, i.e., uh, the types of units that Norman needs as well as increasing the score for any applicant who can, um, provide more affordable housing in total for the development. Does that answer your question?
It does. I, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable with a little bit more of a definition, even if the definition were just to refer you to another document. And, and this might be a clarification of, if you can refer to a document that as may change, as may arise, such as a certain table that may exist in the visitability ordinance, such as a HUD-defined affordable housing. But I would like to see even in, at the level of the spud for the intent of it being for affordable housing. If we're gonna put the words affordable housing in the spud, I feel a clearer definition as to what affordable housing is that refers to a place somebody can look up and find that is kind of crucial to go hand in hand. So I would rather see something more specific to that language.
Okay, and I think I'm gonna let, uh, Tom actually also speak to that as well.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
So, um, if we look at this long-term, you know, take, take a 40-year window and look at it, we don't want a restriction on the use of the housing after the expiration of all the requirements the city's putting on it. If that's what you're thinking about putting in the spud. The, but the programs we're utilizing, including the city's financing, the low-income housing tax credit, the programs through HUD, the maximum income level for someone to live in this property will be 60% of AMI. There is a tiering, a layering of what we're required to take. And it will be, it will vary all the way from 20% to 60%. And they, they've done a good job of structuring the, um, incentives, I would call it, uh, in, in working with the Norman Housing Authority to make sure we do meet that lower income tier. The other, um, you know, the, these programs that we're utilizing, federal programs, have at least a 30-year. And if you wanna point to it, it's the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. That's the federal name for it. The state's name for it is the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program. They're the same program. It's just that the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency uses a different name than the IRS. Exact same program. So if you want to point to something, that's the one that's really gonna put the restrictions on the property. There will be a land use regulatory agreement that says we can, we have to do these things, so. The other, uh, comment I'd like to make is that in applying for these federal dollars, it would be more advantageous to us, the, the development group, to not use the unit mixes that the city has asked us to use. I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds, but, but part of what the city's RFP required us or requested us to do is to use a unit mix, uh, uh, more heavily focused on one-bedrooms, that meets the housing needs of Norman. And so we've, we're gonna do that and, and, uh, and like I said, it, it makes it a little more difficult to get the federal funding, but we think we'll still be successful and still meet the needs of Norman's housing. That, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I definitely understand where the incentives and some of those other brackets are. So if, if I understood correctly, you want to not necessarily put that speci- that specificity in there because in 30 years, for example, after your requirements and agreement for the city have expired, you're gonna be stuck with this within your PUD. Whereas you may not even have those agreements. You may have termed out of some of those agreements, and that might affect future marketability of the property, having that zoning on there. Just, uh, uh, we see regularly in planning commissions, PUDs that do include, I mean, we see down to days of the week and hours within the day. So it is not unusual even to put a time limit on it. We've seen, um, we had a mining one that existed for a year, if I remember correctly. So there could be expirations to that effect that were written into the document. I don't think the only solution is that we keep it that blank. And I would, I would highly encourage that to be considered for city council, so, prior to going there. Even if, like I said, the reference was to another document, to another agreement with the city, something else. I think that's perfectly reasonable at the spud level while still creating something that was clear to it.
And at this point, um, I think that is something that's definitely more achievable once it gets to the city council stage, just because then at that point, we will also have the final agreements with the developer. And then now, then at that point, we can easily reference the, and kinda co-mingle the two. And since it's all gonna be kinda considered together, but, okay, thank you for that feedback.
Any other questions for applicant, like commission? Any audience comments? Seeing any other planning commission discussion?
I'll just say something positive. I think it's a, a great use of the land, but also I appreciate that the city has gone out of its way to lock in the amount of green space and, uh, for an affordable housing group. I mean, I think it's easy to say maximize the number of units, but I think there's a lot of quality of life in the way this is being developed.
And I'd like to say, I, I really appreciate the developer looking at, uh, impact of the development on the existing neighborhood that's there and having that phased buffer. This is something that I would like to see a lot more of. It was nice to see a similar design at the last meeting. But I, I think it's really good to look at deliv- uh, development in the context of, of where it's going to be and the impact it's going, the mo- who it's gonna impact the most, so, thank you.
I think affordable housing has been coming up a lot in a lot of the various groups that have been meeting, including those involving planning commissioners and others. It's definitely at a forethought and very high concern for the city and for city council. So, um, it's, I, I think it's very hard to get properties developed, and I am tentatively excited to see the city making some choices and participating to help achieve some of those results of what we're looking for. So, is, can't always expect somebody to be able to come out of pocket themselves to build the thing you want to see. So, tentatively optimistic about this, so.
Okay, all right. If there's no other comments, I would take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. Carried six to zero.
Moving to, we're going to listen to items seven and eight together. They are different applicants and they are different PUDs, so we will be voting separately. So I'm going to read them together so we can hear them together. However, we will vote sep- separately on those. Item number seven, consideration of approval, action amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 17, CCR Boyd LLC, request rezoning from CCFBC Center City Form Base Code to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development for 0.454 acres of property located at 305 East Boyd Street. And item number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 18, 208 Apache LLC, request rezoning from CCFBC Center, Center City Form Base Code to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development for 0.321 acres of property located at 221 East Boyd Street. Staff presentation.
Good evening. On a star with the Planning Department. Did I go backwards?
Yes.
Sorry. Let me get caught up to the right department. Okay, here we are. Okay, here we are. So this is a request from CCR Boyd LLC to rezone from a Center City Form Base Code, Urban General, to Center City PUD at 305 East Boyd. Here's the subject track on the existing zoning map, and as you can see, to the north is Center City, that is urban residential, and to the west is Center City with Urban General, like this track. And then to the south is, I would point out that it's OU and it is R3 and RM6. I think in the staff report, I did not have that, but it is indeed that. And then to the east is the BNSF Railroad right away. And then here is the existing land use. The subject track is shown, however, I would say it is vacant right at the moment. To the north is also a multifamily apartment under construction. To the west is an existing duplex. And again, to the south is OU and a multifamily uses. And here is an aerial of the track, and this aerial is a little out of date. That house that's, there is, is no longer there, and it is just a vacant track. And then let me show you, excuse me. This is looking north towards the parcel. Oops, oh, sorry, trigger finger there. And this is looking south towards those multifamily existing structures. And then this is east towards the railroad track and west towards OU. And then looking from the alley, this is looking south towards Boyd Street, and then east towards the railroad tracks and west back down the alley direction. And then here's the site plan. It is a proposal to construct a seven residential townhomes with each unit having a maximum of four bedrooms, and each three-story unit will have kitchen and living room on the second floor, and then two bedrooms on the first and third floor. In order to do the, to provide more privacy, they are asking for an increased finished floor elevation, finished floor elevation, and for recess doors, stoops, and balconies, as well as moving the required build line from six feet behind the property line to three feet. Open space will be provided, as you can see, behind the building and on the individual front balconies, and there will be a total of 25 parking spaces on site. And I'd note that the dumpster on this site will be shared with the companion project at 221 East Boyd Street. In order for the applicant to build this proposal, they're able to comply with a lot of the requirements of the Center City Form Base Code, but they are asking for some modifications through this CCPUD. That includes moving the required build line from three feet behind the property line to six feet. Staff would note that the city council adopted on August 22nd movement of the RBL to three feet behind the property line from nine feet, and that became effective on September 22nd, but the applicant had already submitted their request for a rezoning on September 1st. The other variances are to allow for a maximum of four bedrooms, to increase the offset from the required build line from 24 inches to 60 inches, to request to eliminate the fenestration on the east side of the structure, and to eliminate the street trees as well. I would note that they are proposing to add additional landscaping in the rear, as well as amenities such as grills and picnic tables, along with a dog park to the east. And then they are proposing one bike per unit for a total of seven bike racks, I should say, and then, whereas three is only required. The, this item, they did have pre-development meeting along with the 221 East Boyd Street. There was several attendees there. They mainly had questions about clarification of how many units and bedrooms there were, as well as why a CCPUD was being requested, and the applicant answered those. There was no requirement to go to Green Belt or Park Board, and there are no additional comments from Public Works. I would note that facilities made a comment that the, the use of a dumpster will eliminate the numerous polycarts that would be required for service to this location, and recycling will be through the regional recycling centers. And then staff would forward this request in ordinance number O-232417 to the Planning Commission for Consideration and Recommendation, and the applicant is here this evening. But am I correct that I'm going on to present the next one right now, and then he'll do it complete? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. So that we can, yeah, let me get to my.
Unless you want to get your steps in today, because you're sitting down and coming right back up.
So, let me, oh, and I forgot to show the elevation drawing, so here's our, okay. And then the companion project is 208 Apache LLC, again, rezoning from Center City Form Base Code, Urban General, to Center City Planned Unit Development. Here is the subject track and on the existing zoning map. To the east is Center City Urban General, as well as to the west, and to the north is Urban Residential, and to the south is OU, as well as, well, actually, it's just OU. And then here is the existing land use. The property is vacant currently, and to the north is that multifamily apartment complex under construction, as well as an existing multifamily unit. And to the west is a single-family home that is vacant, and to the south is OU, and then to the east is that existing residential duplex. In this case, the, and here's the aerial, and again, that structure is not on that property at this moment, it's already been removed. And here's looking north towards the vacant lot, and then here's looking south at the parking lot of Sarkis Energy Center, and then back east towards the railroad tracks, and then west towards OU, down Boyd Street. And then here's looking from the alleyway towards Boyd Street, and then looking east down the alleyway, and then looking to the west. And here is the site plan, and in this case, the applicant is requesting five residential townhomes and doing the same configuration with three stories, the middle floor, the second floor being the living room and kitchen, and the first and third floor having two bedrooms each. And for the same request, they're requesting to provide some additional privacy by moving the setback, required build line back, and then recessing the stoops and balconies and raising the finished floor elevation. I would note that the, there'll be a total of 23 parking spaces, and three of those parking spaces will be shared with the companion project at 305 East Boyd Street, and as well as the dumpster, and you can see that they're providing open space behind the structure as well. And here's the elevation drawings. And again, they're requesting variances in order to build this proposal, and the variances are to move the required build line from three feet behind the property line to six feet behind the property line, allow for a maximum of four bedroom units, four bedrooms per unit, increase the offset from the required build line from 24 inches to 60 inches, and eliminate the requirement for street trees. And again, I would note that they are providing five bicycle racks, whereas only three would be required. And again, they had the same amount of attendees at this pre-development meeting with the same questions about clarification of bedrooms and units, and wanting to know the reason for the CCPUD. Again, it did not have to go to Green Belt or Park Board, and Public Works had no additional comments. And again, the use of a shared dumpster with 305 will eliminate the numerous polycarts, and recycling will be through the regional recycling center. And with that, staff forwards this request in ordinance number O-2324-18 to Planning Commission for Consideration and Recommendation to City Council. And with that, that is my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that commission might have.
Any questions for staff by commission?
I have a question. What are the street, street tree requirements for the Center City Form Base Code?
The Center City Form Base Code requires spacing of like 30 feet for street trees that are large street trees every 30 feet, and so they're requesting not to have those.
So what would that look like on this property, like two in front of?
I think it'd be three in front of 305 and maybe two in front of 221.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oops, I went backwards, but that worked.
Any other questions for staff?
And the applicant is obviously here to do presentations.
I have a couple of questions, since we had, when, really after Planning Commission last time, we, we talked about where we changed the, the setback from nine feet to three feet, and that was heard at Planning Commission in July, and then went to city council in August. When we talked about it at Planning Commission, I did not follow afterwards to city council, so if you could just clarify. Planning Commission, we talked about possibly having a grandfathered period in or delayed implementation. Did anything like that happen at the city council level, or was it at an immediate effect? Because when we talked about it at Planning Commission, we specifically had concerns of people that already had investments in these properties, having things basically immediately placed on them, and just like this person who had an applicant, application actually was submitted in the time in between the Planning Commission item and the city council item, and so if there hadn't been any delayed implementation or grandfather in, I'm just curious if we would have seen this or not.
No, there was not any, you know, grandfathering added to the adoption of that three-foot RBL, but I, I would say the applicants were aware that that was going forward, but also obviously only affects folks who are redeveloping. If you have an existing property, it didn't. And in this case, you know, when they applied, technically, they were requesting to move from nine feet to six feet, so they would have had to come forward with a SPUD either, either way. So, yeah. But yeah, no, it, it passed as, as, as presented at Planning Commission.
Okay, and then I guess that was, and I just wanted, I guess specifically, maybe make a comment to that, because Commissioner McDaniel, I know, made many comments, and I don't want to speak for him, but he's not here to kind of speak to that effect, but I know several of us had voiced that concern, and this just seemed like exactly why we had that concern at that time, so. An example of it, anyway. So, and I know there are other things within this PUD, it's not to say that that would have prevented this applicant from having a PUD, but, yeah. And then, yeah, that was my only question, I guess, for staff, so, thank you. Could I, unless there's any others, I'll take the applicant's presentations.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Gunnar Joyce with Reeger Law Group on behalf of both applicants. And the reason we requested to kind of do one proposal, it's actually the same developer. It's two different holding, holding companies, but this is the same person that has built quite a bit in the Center City Form Base Code. He actually is someone that builds to code every chance he gets. He's never done a CCPUD before, but this site had presented both timing and the characteristics of the site, something that he felt this was one that justified coming forward with a CCPUD. And so it's someone that is familiar with the code, but this time felt justified in some of these requests. Let me walk you through why we think that is the case, and Commissioner Verd, thank you for bringing that up, because that was where I was going to lead in July in front of you. We had a very robust discussion, almost exactly, about what I'm about to present to you. I've got a timeline, and I'll, and I'll walk you through it, but really, this is someone that had plans at nine feet and was, invested a whole bunch of money, ready to pull the trigger, and it got moved to three. And so we'll go through it. It is a proposal of six feet. We think that is a, a good middle ground to both meet the intent of what was passed at three feet, but also address some of the concerns that not only were brought up by the commission, but by many of the people that wrote protest letters and, and presented their protests to the commission. Current zoning is urban general, there is no change to the allowable use. And here's timeline of development. So this developer purchased multiple lots, these are old, old-platted lots, 25-feet lots, and he did this in late 2021 to early 2022. The next step then was to go forward with lot line adjustments. So he bought multiple lots, I believe it was four on the east side, which is 221, and it was five lots, excuse me, five lots on the east side, four lots on the west side, and he lot lined adjust to make one buildable lot for both. So it's something that was in the works, that was going through the city approval process in October 2022. And then as soon as that was approved, he went to work with a design team, Creative Home Designs, it's the architect on this, and, and they use, JW Dansby's engineer uses for all of his projects in Norman. They were working on it in late 2022. And then obviously, it takes a lot of time to do this, but they were working on their plans when the Center City Form Base Code Amendment came forward. As you're aware, we just mentioned it, it was presented to you in July of 2023, and you guys recommended denial of that application 6 to 1. A lot of that, the reasoning for that was this protest map over here to the right. As you can see, we'll walk through it a little bit. The corner of Minette and Boyd is one of the structures that triggered the amendment process. So it was nine-foot build line at the time that structure was built. Once it was on the ground and built, it was discovered it was actually built to three feet off the property line, which spurred the change in the RBL. The house just to the east of that protested the RBL move. The next one to the east was the same applicant that built up to three feet, another request for the RBL change. To the east, that somebody that was already built protested the move. There is a property to the east of that. That one is a seller that has a, a fairly old, single-family house, they really rented out, and they kind of, I've talked to them on the phone, they use that for game day parking, get a lot of money for that, and they are in the process of looking to possibly sell that. And so that's not really an interested party that is going to develop currently, they're just going to put that on the market. The next one to the east is this project, somebody that had worked in development plans. To the east of that is another recently built, we had a robust discussion again about the people that just beat Center City Form Base Code, so that is a fairly new house that's at the 25-foot setback right before the Form Base Code was passed. They protested the move as well, and then finally, it's this applicant again. So why you bring that to your attention is the majority, and really everyone except this applicant and the person that is trying to move from the site, protested the move of the RBL from nine feet to three feet. This applicant was aware of that, watched that meeting, we had conversations after your discussion and after city council's vote, and instead of the plan at nine feet that he had been working on for over a year, he wanted to find a middle ground. How can I make my neighbors happy that didn't want three feet? How can I ease some of those concerns with traffic, with utility lines? How can I also meet the intent of what was approved, right? There is a purpose to moving the RBL closer to the street. I know that is a stated goal, not only in the Form Base Code, but in, in other areas. And so instead of trying to stick to nine feet, he's got a proposal of, of six feet, a perfect middle ground, three feet from the old one, three feet from the new one. And because of that, we have no protest on this project. These are the same owners that are sandwiched in between these new projects that are going right up to the, to the sidewalk. There's one gentleman that protested last time, and he talked about not wanting to be sandwiched with his new build. He was comfortable with and hadn't, hasn't protested because of a step back to six. That's kind of the whole purpose of the RBL move, is it's, it's a collaborative approach, it's, it's a designed distance of six feet that the neighbors have been comfortable with and haven't protested, that also meets the intent of moving forward. And the three feet that was approved didn't have And the three feet that was approved didn't have that much thought and design into it that the six one had, right? The three feet was discovered, that it has been built past the line, it was encroached, and so it was just fixed. This one has had thought process behind it. This one is taking into consideration a lot of the comments that you made in July. Commissioner Kendall, you talked about Boyd being a busy street and the dangers of being right up to three feet. We feel like six feet provides more safety and privacy, not only to the tenants that will utilize these multifamily homes, but to these existing homes that are going to have to back out onto Boyd with those houses that have already been developed. And so we believe it's a good middle ground. We also think that it's not going to create a difficult jigsaw puzzle. One, because the way this has been developed out, we've already talked about it, but there is going to be a zigzag, no matter what happens. But also, three feet to six feet, as we go to the railroad, as traffic kind of picks up in volume and speed, and then going back to the west, going down from six feet to three feet as we slow down and drive into Campus Corner and into the university, feels like a thoughtful and natural approach into that required build line. Here is the site plan in context. So as you can see, here are the new homes, the new projects that are built to three feet. This is our request at six feet. So it is very close. It's not going to look like a massive jag into the back, a zig into the back like these 25-foot ones will, and it'll provide some of that, what we believe to be kind of a safer approach along the high-traffic Boyd Street. Proposed elevations. Anis mentioned this, but essentially, every single unit will be three stories. It'll be vertical. The ground floor will have two bedrooms. The middle floor will be a living and kitchen, and then the top floor, two more bedrooms. There will be five units with four bedrooms apiece, and we're talking 20 bedrooms on the west 221. There will be 28, seven units and four bedrooms on 305. And here's the proposed renderings. It's a very thoughtful design. They're very excited about the usable balcony space. That's some of the recessed elements that we can get with a variation from that RBL. We also have the recessed doorways and stoops that kind of pull back. You know, we have the build line at six feet, the stoop, the beginning of stoop is actually at three feet. Again, another attempt to sort of mesh together the three-feet and six-feet element, where we can pull back the door, we can pull back the balcony to give a little protection from both Boyd and also the overhead power lines that are in front of this project that did not exist in front of the project at the corner. So the details, basically, we touched on a lot of it already, but we're getting additional density in a location where it's appropriate. We are right across the street from the university. This is a good spot to put more units, more rental units. It's very walkable, it's very multimodal to the university, to Campus Corner. To that extent, we're also adding more bike racks than what would be required by code, so we're trying to encourage multimodal transportation. The shared dumpster and the shared parking spaces allow us to have usable open space in the back instead of, like you'll see some of the other developments in the area. This is a great example, the one that's sandwiched in, is really just parking in the back. With our ability to kind of share some elements, we have a grill area, a picnic area on both locations, and we have this dog park over here that can be utilized by the members of the community. Here's the existing street tape. I want to talk about this because of the street tree discussion. This is the project that's right on the corner of Boyd and Monette. It was built to three feet. As you can see, there are no trees. There is not a single street tree on either side. That is our proposal. We just want to match the development of what has occurred there. You asked that question, Commissioner, of the number of trees that would happen, about two and three in front of each respectively. In the back, we are proposing eight trees on each project. So we are landscaping, we are providing trees. This is just something, when you bring the buildings all the way up to the sidewalk, we lose the ability to actually put a tree in the soil that can survive. And you also see, we have utility lines, cable lines, and then as we get closer to our project, you see the power lines jut up that we cannot plant anything under, and that nothing really would survive of any substance that is desired with the street tree along Boyd Street. This is, as we keep going farther, you can see these are the cable, utility telephone lines. This is, if I go back here, this is one of the protesters that protested. They have that driveway that'll back out on the Boyd, they're sandwiched in. This is another one. This is that house that is potentially going to hit the market. And this is the start of this project right here, and you can see the utility lines now have started on the property. So that's a power line, as opposed to the cable and internet lines that go closer to Monette Street. So because of that, there's another reason that we think a minor step back is appropriate, and that street trees would not be functional with bringing the building up to six feet. With that, there's the site plan in context. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for the applicant by Commission?
I'm sure I'll ask some questions. I'd like to start with a comment. I think it's a great location for development. I go past here five days a week, and it leaves a lot to be desired the way it is. I also appreciate, you know, trying to push for more infill. When I joined the Planning Commission, I wouldn't have been as excited, but over time, I've been really won over by infill development. So I think, I think that this development is going to bring a lot to the neighborhood. You know, maybe I'll give one more comment about why I keep asking about trees. I'm thinking 30 years down the line about heat and quality of life. And so I'm thinking, you know, when people come for game day and they're going down Boyd Avenue, you know, I think it's much more attractive to see trees. When I travel, you know, especially outside the U.S., there's a lot of integration between the natural world and well-developed cities. Large cities of millions of people still have trees lining the roads and very close to buildings. I know it's a challenge, but it's not impossible. So, one last question, you know, looking in the back of the development, I did notice all those trees. I like that. But one question I would ask is, why not a tree or two in the center of the parking lot, again, so that in 20 years, you're knocking, knocking back that heat gain from all the concrete?
Do you have the landscape plan that you can flip to for reference also?
I don't have a good zoomed-in version on the PowerPoint. I apologize. I can kind of call out some of these. There's circles that you can see, and you, in the packet have better, but right here is a tree, right here is a tree, there's one that's three, this is four, I think here's five, six, and seven up top here. So I'm missing one, could be maybe here. The hard part with putting in the middle here, and this is something that probably they spent the most amount of design on in this project, which, from that timeline, is well over almost two years at this point, is how do we get actually usable parking here? Because you're required to go one parking spot per bedroom, and we want to add density, we want to be infill. Well, you can use things like tandem parking, but what happens a lot is the person that would be the very first one to park in there realizes, I'm not going to be able to get out for my 8:00 AM class in the morning. And so maybe they're going to park in the alleyway, or maybe they're going to park over here in this kind of not really developed-out right-of-way slash city street. And we get complaints all the time on these projects because this narrow alleyway becomes not navigable. When you put something here, like right in the middle, we now don't have the ability to kind of get in and out in a way that maximizes this area for usable parking. It's still probably not as good as, you know, the sea of parking that no one likes to see, but the reason that's there is that it's, you know, you have plenty of room to back out, it's easy to get in and out. You're able to, in the Center City area, to go rent parking spaces within 1,000-foot radius of your project. And I know that some applicants do that because it makes your site more appealable at this stage, right? I'm able to show you more green space, I'm able to show you less impervious. But when it's actually developed in practice, you don't have enough parking on your site. And even though you may have at least 1,000 feet away, that person isn't parking in the least parking spot. And so there was a lot of effort put into, how can we actually park, self-park, and, you know, make it to where we've self-parked without encroaching on the alleyway? Because you can look at some of these already, like that car's in the alleyway, that car's in the alleyway. I drove it today to get pictures, and I'm having to wiggle my car through. And so we didn't want to add any difficulty, and we really wanted to try and improve the area. And so that's why the parking layout is the way it is. It's also why you see there's shared parking on the west lot. There's three parking spaces that will be servicing the east units. That one could have, you know, pulled the lease card, and maybe south, where there's a whole bunch of parking down here, just told their students, because a lot of these probably are going to be students, use your student parking pass and park in there. And then late at night, and then when they have visitors, they actually are going to be jamming up that alleyway. And at midnight, when somebody has to get out for an emergency, you've got to go knock on doors. So, super-long answer, only because they spent about two years on the design, so I'm well aware in why the parking layout looks the way it does.
I have a tack-on comment and question, and I'll start with my question of, some of, I've seen in some of the visualizations, you have shrubs, for example, kind of planned that wouldn't get too tall. Also, the property on the corner has similar landscaping in there, but I noticed there wasn't any shrubs included in the landscape plan. So that would be something that if you're not putting streets there, putting in required vegetation of some kind that was appropriate might still be appropriate, and that would be a comment I would make, too.
That's some language I think we're happy to look at and put in, as you made that point. They are shown in the proposed renderings, and so I think we are more or less trying to get out of whether street trees are actually required here or not, because the buildings that happened close to Monette do not have any trees. And I know, obviously, we didn't, you didn't have this process with those projects, there was no variance for those street trees. If they are not required, you know, maybe it's because it's so close to the right-of-way, we might not have to do them. But just to be safe at this stage, when we go to building permit stage, we want to make sure that we wouldn't be hit with that request at a later date. But happy to put in that landscaping shrubbery.
I have a question that is for staff. I don't know if it's appropriate time to ask that, or if we should wait until?
Especially if it's related for landscaping, while we're on the landscaping topic.
So, I've been told that the developer who did the project on the corner of Monette, trees are required on that site, but there's been an allowance to plant those trees at a time of year when they have the best chance of survival. Can that be confirmed or denied?
They have a requirement to plant landscaping, both in the rear and the front, and a lot of developers have, I shouldn't say a lot, it's happened. The nursery or whatever they're working with does not want to plant them and then guarantee them when it's 100 degrees outside, so they plant later. So there will be trees planted on the one property, I'm sorry, I don't know the address, but there's two properties down there. The street trees right on the corner can't be planted if they're going to block the sightline, and those won't be allowed, but other trees on the other property, which, I'm sorry, I can't remember the addresses, will be planted, as well as the ones in the back that are required, so that he's going to do, and the ones along Monette that are required. So he will be planting them, and he just hasn't yet. And I believe it's, he'll get those done by December is what he asked for, and that's what the nursery asked for, for him.
So I have a comment about landscaping related to that. So recently, I've been taking the OSU Extension Small Acreage Gardening classes, and I just completed the tree, fall gardening and tree section in particular. Fall is the best time to plant trees, spring being the second best, when they are kind of in a dormant period and they have the highest chance of survival. So fall and spring would be the time you would want a tree planted if you actually wanted to live. I know that's been comments that's been brought up even before Form-Based Code about trees getting in, they die, and then not being replaced. So I think it's helpful to allow developers to be able to plant trees that are going to succeed in general. And I think in, across Norman, everywhere, we have overhead lines. Trees near those can look visually terrible, as well as being a large burden upon the city to cut, or they've been, I mean, there was a lot of problems when Berry Road, you know, a strip that I drive by every day, had a lot of trees cut, and it was really that the city power lines, it was either City or it may have been Ogeny, I don't remember who it was, but offered, do you want us to just cut this down so you don't have to keep dealing with it? And a lot of owners chose to, and this was not to the taste of many people, because trees do have a benefit. And in that class and across many articles and places that you can find, trees are one of your highest returns on investment that you can do for a property, for the cost of what they take to put in, for an individual property, as well as return on investment for the city. So I do think about these tree requirements as being in there as a city requirement, not just individual property requirements. I think there are plenty of reasons for allowances on there, but I just wanted to make those few kind of related comments, I guess. Any other questions relating to the landscaping before we maybe move to the next?
I do, I have, I have one question. I just want to be clear, on the landscape visual, you have concrete and sod separated, and then private open area. So what will the surface be in the private open areas? Is that sod, or is that concrete? Or does it depend on which one it is?
I think it may depend on which one it is. I apologize, let's look at this, too, and they're basically almost the same dots, if you will, but what I know for a fact is it is capped at 85% impervious. And so when you visually look at that, that's most of the parking lot and then the building of the site. And so I would imagine everything else that has that dotted line is sod in order to achieve the pervious area.
Okay. Jane has a comment, too.
So, am I on? Can you hear me? Okay. So I just wanted to remind everybody and clarify, I don't want us to get, landscaping is very important. I completely, 100% agree with you, but I would remind us to be careful and not get too caught up, because until they actually get the application in, we have the ability to review where those locations might be. We have to be cognizant of water lines, sewer lines that might be out there in the right-of-way. So they may not be able to put trees in there anyway, but we always do our best to see what they can get, you know, there for the landscaping, but, I mean, there may be water lines and easements that they cannot go over.
To that point, I would just want to make basically a very similar comment, is we did craft the language to say it's not required. Of course, when we get to final building stage, a tree may very well benefit the project, and the developer would want to do it. And so we just want to make sure that that's not something that gets imposed on them and they're feasibly can't do it with the overhead lines there. But if it becomes, you know, desirable and able to survive, it's something they may very well do.
To that point, question on that is, if it was required in the PUD, but for any reason, whether it was location of power lines or sewer water, would they still be required to plant a tree? I would think that they would. I mean, they could still move forward with a building permit, given that you, I mean, they don't have a choice, basically. Like, you have to not plant a tree at that point.
So Commissioner Brewer, we're always very careful with the language in the PUD that essentially allows for instances like that, that, basically, that we like to say final locations are approved by staff. It even says in there, city forester or other appropriate staff member, in case, we did just have the forester in there only, but, you know, if there's a time the city doesn't have one, maybe one Jane or somebody else to be able to look at and prove it. We're careful not to have solid locked-in language so that we get into that interpretation battle. We would prefer, just like your point, to where landscape is important and we're committing to it, but we can't lock in that location yet.
I appreciate that, but the reason that you want it in the PUD, at least from our side, is that it locks you into it. So I understand why the developer wouldn't want to be locked in, but I like to see that language in a proposal. That way, it is locked in, and I'm confident that we're going to meet the That way, it is locked in, and I'm confident that we're going to meet the criteria that was put out in the Form-Based Code for the city center.
We try, that language, I can pull it up here, is, we try and walk that line, because we understand we can't just say we want to do what we want to do. So, we're committing to landscaping, committing to meeting the landscape requirements. But since rezonings and PUDs and SPUDs are always so different, that we're not only locked into the language, like in a regular zoning, you're locked into the ordinance, but now we've got the site plan that locks us in. And so, the ordinance might have allowed flexibility that we kind of opt out of through the PUD. So, we have here in the landscaping, landscaping will be provided in substantial compliance with the site development plan. So, to me, that is that substantial compliance. If we can't comply, we will. If it's, you know, substantial deviation we have to make, we're allowed to do. Final landscaping types, quantities, and locations may change during final design and construction. Any of those trees, just briefly go, any trees to be planted shall be of the species type that's listed in Section 506 Center City Form-Based Code, opting into your adopted list of trees. And they are, they must be approved by the City of Norman Forester, City of Norman Ordinance, or another appropriate City of Norman staff member.
Yeah, so, we pulled the PUD narrative, and thank you for clarifying. It does show in there on item, section, section B10, that the final landscape, it has substantial compliance with the site plan. So, I like having the site plan, having the landscape, and that they intend to have substantial compliance. So, yeah, I think that's where he's talking about that wiggle room language. Nobody else said it, but are we ready to get out of the weeds on this, or do we have more discussion items?
It's a landscaping joke.
Nobody else said it, I was literally waiting every time. All right.
That we were in the landscaping.
I do want to make sure we've had enough time, if there's any other comments we want to make on this. I think there's a few other points on this particular application that I think we'll probably hear, so.
The only question I have, and I don't know if you would have an answer, Jane, it's more for staff. Do we know when it passed at city council, what the vote on that was?
I believe it's unanimous approval, as written, without any.
Moving from the nine foot to three foot.
Yes, with the recommendation of not to.
Yes, and for city council, yeah, just for their benefit, I will also say there's times we say yes, they say no. It can go.
Either way, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand why you're here.
I have a couple of other questions and a few other items. Maybe can you just speak very briefly to the maximum of four bedrooms that you wrote in?
Yes, so, there is a, kind of splitting hairs here. There's a minimum unit count in Center City Form-Based Code, we're exceeding that. But there is a maximum bedroom count within the unit. And so, the maximum bedroom count is three bedrooms unless you request either a special use or a rezoning. And so, that is what we were doing here. We're getting more density, instead of three, we're allowed a fourth bedroom in every single unit.
Thank you. And I know there's probably just some, the build line, I think, in general, I liked. I personally feel like I went along with that. I think that there might be some other opinions. I don't know if there's any other discussion we want to specifically ask questions about or have regarding the build line. I think the stoop going to three feet and the actual building at six feet, I thought that was an eloquent solution as being a compromise. I think, in general, I think there might be some comments by commissioners about making Form-Based Code changes that maybe we could speak to, if we'd like to, but.
I don't have a question, I just have comments. Is it appropriate time to comment?
Yeah, I think we could, unless there's any, does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any audience comments for this one? I'm not seeing any, we can move to discussion then.
So, I start with saying, I walked to this site for about 20 minutes today. I was just curious what it felt like, you know, what the existing elements were, both the project on the corner of Monette that has a three-foot RBL, the others that have a 25-foot setback, and just, really just trying to picture what this might look like and kind of how that affected the aesthetic of the street as you went down. And also got in my car and took three loops around the block to take a left turn and a right turn, and then flip on the other side of the street, which is the OU campus, to come out of one of those drivelines, just to kind of get an idea of what sightlines looked like. One thing that struck me was the distance between the building, the front of the building at the project of Monette that has a three-foot RBL, the distance from that, the front of that building to the curb line of Boyd Street, and how much space there really is between that gap. And when we were having that discussion a few months back about, you know, whether we were recommending or not the move from the nine foot to three foot, I think a lot of our, well, at least my picture in my mind, because I hadn't walked the site at that point admittedly, was that at three feet was, I mean, almost, you know, you had three feet and then maybe another three feet to the streets. You have a lot of room between the building and the street. And I can't show them, but I took some pictures. And so, the, speaking, you know, back to some of the concerns that we had at the time about sightlines and like turning left on that street, and just some safety and things like that, it didn't feel that way when I was on site out there. I mean, it felt good. And specifically referring to the existing, two existing structures, the one corner of Monette and then the one two lots down. But, you know, bigger comment here is just, just building to the intent of the Form-Based Code and why a CCPUD, what is intended to be used for in the first place. It's really intended to be, when the code was adopted in 2017, to be a mechanism for a developer to develop on a site that the code did not fit. And in this case, this feels like a developer preference, as opposed to requiring, or really fixing the code, if you will. Something that is, that they, the developer feels, you know, might feel better, or, you know, might present a more attractive product, or whatever it may be. I, you know, I don't think that was necessarily discussed, like what the intent was outside of, you know, having potentially gone into design in the first place and made that change. It's also just looking at the site itself and thinking, you know, how much of a fundamental change would it be from a cost perspective and site design to move to three feet? And I think it's fairly insignificant, in my opinion, looking at this from a development perspective. And, you know, one thing that the developer did on the project, the corner of Monette, that I think was really attractive, and I wish, in some ways, was a requirement of the Form-Based Code, is they buried the power lines. And that, by burying the power lines, that opened up, in my opinion, the, any issues that you may have with three-foot RBL, in addition to any issues you may potentially have with the streets, sorry, the trees, the street trees, that's what I meant to say. And while it's not a requirement here, I personally would think that that would be a pretty good recommendation for this site, especially considering the importance of Boyd Street and what the future of that street's going to look like. I think that we need street trees along there. At some point, and, you know, the, at some point in the future, whether it's 10 years or 30 years, I do think that that street's going to have a complete streetscape redevelopment. We had a lot of discussion about that at our meeting, where we were talking about the RBL move. And that's such a prominent street for just the visibility and kind of like being one of the gateways to the university, that getting this right is vitally important. And having the jigsaw effect of three foot to 25 foot to three foot to, 25 foot to six feet, the more we can get that right now, the better, in my opinion. And so, you know, having that consistency of three feet all the way along, despite the existing conditions that you have a couple that have 25-foot setback, that's my, that's my primary issue with this, is that I think that the possibility is there, it's just a preference. And again, that goes back to the intent of what a PUD, CCPUD is really intended for. It's for some, it's a, just using an example, it's a triangle corner lot that just doesn't fit with anything in the code, because there's a lot of kind of one-size-fits-all within the code. And this feels like a preference, as opposed to a move to suit a necessary, the necessity of being able to develop the site. So, otherwise, I think it's a great project. I want to acknowledge that, I think it's a great project. I think it's, there is a lot to be commended for here. There was kind of a question of this being general, I think it's called general, urban general, there we go. Urban general, and whether this is really an urban general project. I do have questions about that, because urban general is really intended to be, the first floor can be converted into a commercial use. And I think there's a great opportunity here to have some of the first live-work units in all of Norman. And how these are designed, that limits your ability to do that and flip that into the future. With that being said, otherwise, it's a nice product, and I like the site design in the back of the lot. I think that this is nice as far as infill and adding more units, which we need more units, 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 units. So, all that's, you know, I, it's really the RBL and kind of the intent of why we're looking at this as a preference. And so, a lot of, a lot of the kind of long-winded explanation is that, but I just kind of provide some context there as well, so.
Any other discussion? We do have to vote, if we don't have any other discussion, on each item separately. So, if you, anybody wants to make a motion for item seven, and then after that votes item eight specifically.
Move to approve seven.
I second that.
And a vote?
So, I do have a, can I have a question on that?
Motion is on the table, but yes, we can discuss.
Okay, the only, I likely will not be voting in favor of that due to the RBL. However, we had a lot of discussion about landscaping and trees, and so, just wanted to see if that was something that was important to the commission, that we made that as part of a recommendation, that we required the trees. But it's up to you all as to whether we want to do that or not, so.
I mean, I would love if the power lines were buried and some trees were there, particularly with it being six foot back instead of three, because that would give you such amazing down-the-road opportunities for shade, studying outside, whatever, urban living. But I don't know that we can, we've got a motion on the table, so I don't know that we can add any.
Might be a Beth question, but, you know, if there's any, if that is the intent, or, I mean.
With a second, we would need it withdrawn voluntarily.
I would just be cautioned if we're adding like a recommendation to require the lines to be buried, just to be considered of the cost. I'm going to make a, I'm just going to make a comment. I have done a Center City Form-Based Code PUD before. So, I being my husband and I, we were one of the first new constructions for commercial. We made an alteration, a few small things. We changed the first story of a ground four commercial building on Main Street. The difference of a couple of feet in height, which changed us needing to use wood versus steel construction and saved us, I like $130,000 to build the same building. So, I think there are situations, you know, I speak from personal experience, that I think there are situations that a little bit of nuance comes in. And I definitely also respect Commissioner Brewer's position that, you know, I think part of this was that everything didn't have to get putted, that there was enough wiggle room to build more extensively what we were looking for without having to do that, so. So, that was just a comment to be thoughtful about those costs and adding some of those.
And that wasn't like an official recommendation. I was just saying, if we were doing a wish list, that would be great, but there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, so unless it's voluntarily withdrawn, I think, you know.
I like the project, and as a comment, I probably could have made earlier, years ago, when I was on council, I was a chair of a high-density committee. And quite frankly, I had a vision of this segment of Boyd looking like Brooklyn Brownstone's. And this project is as close as we're going to get to that. I thought, I thought, my gosh, this is what I thought about years ago. So, I'm tickled to death. And I don't see there's any way that you could bury those utility lines in front of the buildings, because that's the only practical place to put them, and still plant trees. That's just not possible. So, I think the setback is a compromise. I think it's a, I think it's a great project for the street. I think the amenities in the rear are perfect. So, I think, again, my motion stands, I hope we vote to approve this.
So, we have a vote and a second for item seven, or we have a motion and a second, sorry, if we can have a vote for item seven.
You may vote.
Really? I guess I can't. Oh, there we go, thank you.
Everyone has voted and for yes and to no.
And then, we have a different item to vote on that could have a motion on it for item number eight, if anybody might like to make a motion for item eight.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote.
Everyone has voted, and again, we have a vote of four to two.
Okay, moving to our next items, items number nine and 10. Item nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of resolution number R-2324-62 LLC. Request amendment of Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from office designation to high-density residential designation for 1.48 acres of property located at 2281 36th Avenue Northwest. And item number 10, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-20 Hampton Homes LLC. Request rezoning from C1 Local Commercial District to SPUD simple planned unit development for 1.48 acres of property located at 2281 36th Avenue Northwest. The applicant has requested postponement to the November 9, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. And I don't know if anybody wants to hear anything regarding that, or if they would like to make a motion regarding that item.
Sorry, what would the motion be to postpone?
To approve the postponement.
I move to approve the postponement.
To the 9th, November 9th.
Thank you.
2023.
And I second moving it to November 9.
And a vote?
You may vote.
Everyone has voted, read six to zero.
The next items we're going to read, we've got three items together, 11, 12, and 13. Item number 11, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of resolution number R-2324-62 DAR LLC. Request amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from very low-density residential designation to low-density residential designation for 80 acres of property located at the southwest corner of 24th Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. Item number 12, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment. Item number 12, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-16 DAR LLC. Request rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural District to SPOUD Planned Unit Development for 80 acres of property located at the southwest corner of 24th Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. And item number 13, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-6, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by DAR LLC SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Monta Vista Estates, a planned unit development for 80 acres of property located at the southwest corner of 24th Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. I'll take the staff presentation.
All right, Laura Hoggitt. So we have an application from DAR LLC for a 2025 plan amendment from very low-density to low-density residential. This is for 80 acres at the southwest corner of 24th Avenue Northeast and East Tecumseh Road. So the surrounding area is mostly very low-density. The green kind of curvy line turns into country residential. And then the darker yellow to the west is low-density. Which is what they're requesting. They're also requesting rezoning from A2 to PUD. This would be for 83 single-family lots on approximately half-acre tracts. So it's currently A2, which is most of the surrounding zoning. And to the west is Montecito Ranch and Park Hill is right off 12th. The land is currently vacant and pretty much surrounded by single-family and agricultural uses. Here's the aerial of the lot. So this is looking directly at, I guess at an angle, but 24th and Tecumseh. Looking east on Tecumseh. And then looking north on 24th. South on 24th, and this would be at the southernmost point of the tract. And then west on Tecumseh, the westernmost part. So you can see some of the houses of Montecito Ranch in the background. Here we have the preliminary plat. The preliminary site plan. And we did receive two protest letters. Only one was within the notification area and it accounted for 3.4%. And then the applicant is here with a presentation. I'm available for questions as well.
Any questions for staff by commission?
Maybe I'll ask a quick question. I thought I read that the Green Belt Commission made a recommendation for how trails should connect up. Was that incorporated into the layout?
So that will really go more in the final plat stage. So they did leave room for it. And the developer did say at Green Belt that they're more than willing to design them at final plat stage. So that's really more of the nitty-gritty part.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant's presentation.
Hi, Libby Smith on behalf of the applicant. With us, we have Gunnar Joyce and Sean Rieger, Houston Sneed with the applicant, and the engineer, Chris Anderson. So this project is on the southwest corner of East Tecumseh and 24th Ave Northeast. It is 80 acres. The applicant is planning a single-family residential neighborhood with large half-acre lot sizes. The current zoning is A2. Surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding properties are PUD, single-family, A2 mostly. We're asking to go planning unit development to allow for the single-family neighborhood. Current 2025 is very low-density residential. And we're asking to go low-density residential, once again, to allow the neighborhood. This is the preliminary site plan. Like Laura said, there's going to be 83 single-family lots. They'll all be approximately half-acre. With a little bit more detail, those gated entrances and private streets throughout the addition. The addition will utilize city water and have private sanitary sewer systems. Along with that, there's going to be approximately 13 acres of open space. That area in the middle that's kind of outlined in red will be WQPZ. And so it will basically remain in its natural state. You can also sort of see that that is where most of the trees are on the property. And so those will all be protected as the riparian buffer. So once again, this outlines the green space. That center green space will be the WQPZ. And then the bottom along the south, there's also another detention pond there. And it will remain green space as detention. So here's the preliminary plat showing the addition in a little bit more detail. And then finally, to restate our request is we want to rezone to a planned unit development from the existing A2. This will allow 83 single-family residential lots with the company uses. The PUD also allows one accessory dwelling unit per lot. They will amend our 2025 designation to low-density and retain 15% of the property as open space. A few notes from the staff report is that traffic does not believe there's any negative impacts to this property, to the surrounding properties based on this. And Parks Board approved a fee in lieu instead of parkland donation. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Question?
Where is the, the Parks Board accepted a fee in lieu of parkland? And I believe the, if I read correctly, that this neighborhood will have access to Deerfield?
Yes.
And which part of the section is Deerfield Development? Refresh my memory if you would. How close is it?
I am not sure how close it is.
Okay, well, that's the only thing that gives me any heartburn at all, there's no park. But, and that's because I was on the Parks Board and there was a development that occurred in that square mile of land. And they waited over 12 years to have access to a seven-acre park that the developers in this section of land had to develop to the park. And I really, that's the only issue I have with this right now. So, but I just need to know where Deerfield is and how close it is to this neighborhood.
And how to get there.
And how to get there because there is no, there's no connection.
So here's Deerfield Park.
Could you flip back a few slides?
So here's Tecumseh.
Maybe, maybe I don't know how to get back.
And going forth, and that's Deerfield.
Other way.
We all have to learn. I don't know that I could operate it. Just something that shows some of the streets on there, maybe like the initial one, do you have?
I guess this is probably Deerfield.
So it's off of, Deerfield Park is off of Rock Creek between 12th and 24th, so.
So it's on the west side of 24th.
Okay, so the, on the left map, bottom left, the green square there, that is the Deerfield Park.
And are there sidewalks along 24th to get to the park?
So the applicant will put in sidewalks along Tecumseh and 24th at final plat. And I'll point out that these are large lot sizes. So there'll be lots of green space yards where they'll have access to nature.
Wait, I apologize, I thought the lot sizes were a half-acre.
Half-acre, yeah.
Would anyone on staff know how large the park is in Greenfield or Deerfield? You can take all the time you need, I'm just curious.
I'm going to guess one acre if I were to make a wild guess if our subject tract is 80 acres, just based on kind of a visual. We'll see how close I end up.
Can I ask a question of the staff? Is there a rubric that's given to the Parks Board that they're encouraged to follow for when to accept a fee in lieu of park?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Okay.
When you go to Parks Board, you've already requested. I mean, applicants, I think, has already requested fee in lieu of, so they just go with that calculation.
Thank you.
Well, as a former member of the Parks Board for a very long time, the park had to be in relatively close proximity. And almost a mile away is unacceptable, especially a park that's small, so. This really troubles me.
The applicant's here, can I ask a question, something that stood out? So it looked like a neighbor had asked a question, how much were the homes going to sell for? The answer was $700,000 roughly. And then I noticed that on the approved uses, mobile homes was there. That just seemed a little bit, little far apart. So it just stood out.
We took the uses from RE zoning. That's kind of what we based this development on. And so that just came straight from the zoning ordinance for residential estate.
Can I ask why a PUD instead of just residential?
The lot size doesn't match up with residential estates. And also, we wanted to allow the accessory dwelling units.
Ah, thank you.
Could you speak to use of the accessory dwelling units and if they can be rented separately or not?
So the accessory dwelling units are just like the other couple of recent developments we've done where they can have their own kitchen, own living, and they can be separately rented.
Go for it.
So I just realized.
So I just realized the monies may be going to, texting, I'm not getting a response, but the monies may be going to Deerfield down here. But also up at Park Hill, there's a large park up here, kind of at the top of the hill. It's not shown, so it may be designated as a private park for Park Hill. But there is still a large park area up here in this PUD just south of where the dance studio is. Just FYI.
Commissioner, if I may too, I was at Parks Board. Libby was not at Parks Board that night, so she's really not in a position to answer. But I was there and presented it. And let me just say a few things. One, this is a gated community, so it would not be a public park that others would go to. But what often is, you ask what's the criteria of parks? Oftentimes, the criteria is parks has to deal with their dollars of maintenance. And when they get into a community that's only 90 homes, they calculate the size of the public park based on the population. The population would have factored in to be a one-half acre park here. That would have been it. So this would be a tiny park. And they call them pocket parks is what happens is. The public parks has gotten to the point where they don't like to maintain a half-an-acre park because they've got to send a mowing crew there and they've got to deal with everything else, possibly put equipment there for a tiny park. And so the discussion at Parks Board that night, right in the next-door room, was whether they wanted a tiny half-an-acre park for a gated community of 90 homes or whether they wanted to take that money and put it down into these other parks. And so that was the discussion that night. And we recommend what the developer would like, but it is totally up to the Parks Board as to whether they accept that recommendation or not. And the park staff looks at it first, writes a report as to whether they want to recommend that or not. Staff recommended that, Mr. James Briggs presented it and presented how he did not want it to be a half-acre park. Said he would rather take those dollars, put them into nearby parks. And that was the discussion that night. So Libby wasn't there that night. I thought it would be helpful for you to hear from me as I was in that location.
Thanks, Sean. What was the fee in lieu of?
The fee is usually calculated later and it's usually based on floodplain land averages of, to current date. James Briggs usually comes up with an average cost. I don't know where it is currently, but they do that at final plat. So usually, we're not even involved in the actual amount, so.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any more questions?
There were some concerns in the protests regarding traffic, drainage, and curbs. And maybe you can speak to those three items.
So those will all be done in accordance with staff recommendations and with all the ordinances. And will be more particularly designed at the final plat stage.
So can, do you, I don't know if you guys have your engineer here. Sometimes you bring the engineer, sometimes you don't. But the, speaking to the draining and where the lot drained specifically to the north, one of our protest letters, and thank you for the people that write in, we do actually read all of those. We saw like a picture and they described that it drained to the north into an area that they see a dam that overflows in. Tell me how you're alleviating their concerns and thus our concerns.
All right, I'm going to see if I can back this thing up. Okay, so yes, we heard the concerns at the preliminary development meeting. We actually have eight detention ponds on this site. There's one here on the southwest corner. We've got two up here on Tecumseh, I'm sorry. Yeah, right up there, you were talking about going north. Then we actually have three that come through this big green belt area through here. Also, all that area drains to the north. And then we have two small sliver detention ponds over adjacent to this road. So we've got eight detention ponds. So we've got that covered, those areas going to the north.
Yeah. So I know that the city's requirement in general is not to make anything worse than where it is. And, you know, it was in the staff report, I believe, that it would not necessarily be helping anything for the neighbors but not be making anything worse for them, so I don't know if there was. And then as far as curbs, are curbs part of the, I don't know if that ever got designed into the plan or if they were going to be since they're private roads.
Now, this is a rural estates project and so it's a rural estates-type road with barditches.
Maybe we can wait, maybe speak a little bit more about the traffic too. So the, the traffic we had seen, I know somebody had said that there, in the protest letter had read that it was brought up that a left-turn lane was not appropriate for this site and possibly of widening the roads. This might be a city question if there is any plans for widening these roads out here and making a little, relieving a little bit of traffic if we're adding more units here. Got somebody coming up.
Hi, David Reesland, Transportation Engineer. Yeah, there are plans to widen Tecumseh as well as 24th on the east. Their projects are underway right now. The design of those projects is underway. The problem with a lot of other projects that we have is funding.
Do you, is there any kind of a slated timeframe for widening? Is there a federal matching that is being included in this particular one?
There is federal matching and that's what makes it hard to establish a timeframe.
Do you have like any kind of an approximate lookout onto that, five-year, 10-year, two-year?
It's probably at least five.
Thank you. What is the green space at the bottom right of this map? It just seems a little out of place, that one little patch in there and why that is there. I'm just curious on that. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac and it's a little square that's green.
So where we're at?
It's, you can see it on the green space map if you go to the actual colorized one. What is that in the bottom right?
Yeah, so that area at that corner, and there's also one back up at the northwest corner. Those are actually city water well locations.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I know we have some audience comments. Thank you so much for filling out your cards. Jack Mattingly, if you're still here, will you come up, please? And just a reminder, if you will say your name and address, I know I have it on your card, but if you'll say it for the record. If you want a 30-second warning, let me know. Otherwise, I'll give you a full three minutes, and then thank you for your comments.
I would appreciate that, thank you. I wrote one of the protests, I'm not going to make you sit through me reading that to you again. But after hearing some of these comments.
Would you just start with your name and address? I'm so sorry.
My name is Jack Mattingly, and I live at 1825 East Tecumseh.
Thank you.
Right across from the development. I guess my question would be, if Tecumseh is eventually going to be expanded, and I would, good, that's a good thing, especially if we're going to have development and continued development going east on Tecumseh. Why would we do it after we put in an exclusive subdivision with $700,000 homes? It would seem to wildly increase the cost of condemning that land to put a road in. I would think we put the infrastructure in first. And you all have a lot more institutional memory than I do about when Norman does and doesn't condemn right of ways and where the choke point is. And it's, okay, that's too much money to spend. But a bunch of $700,000 homes and slicing through a subdivision, that's a pretty significant condemnation effort. And that's a lot of money. And it takes a lot of political will to get that done. So just from, the view from 30,000 feet is if the subdivision goes in, it won't get expanded, because it's such a heavy financial and political price to pay to upend all of those people with their expensive homes. Also, the other thing that I wrote about, it's a little bit distressing. It's such a purposeful and thoughtful development, but my house is directly across from the driveway. And as those houses, as all cars pull out and they turn left to go to town, those headlights are going to go right across my house. And it, I mean, that'd be a lot of headlights every night, and I think that would constitute a nuisance. I would hope that there could be some provision to take care of that. And then I thought I heard the statement, there was going to be a sidewalk down Tecumseh. That's a bardage that runs down Tecumseh. And then they're going to turn around and expand the road. So I guess my question is, what does that look like, putting a sidewalk down a bardage? And why put a sidewalk if in five years, we're going to expand Tecumseh? There's been some really methodical, good planning on Norman's Park, going west down Tecumseh. It's just nothing but subdivisions. I think for my, for plural miles going west. And traffic just flows like a dream, it's no problem. And I put in a letter, there's other places where that's not done. They put the subdivisions in first, then they don't expand the road because they can't.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So those are my questions. I'd just like to know the chronology of the sidewalks and the road going in, why we would put in all of these expensive homes right before we're going to expand the road. It should be the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, let's hear the other audience comments, and then we'll see if we have other questions. Thank you. Marty Cummins? Just same thing, say, start with your name and address, please. And then if you want a 30-second warning, let me know, or I'll yield the full time.
I'll take 30.
Thank you.
Yes, Marty Cummins, I'm 1900 Jenny Lee Lane. And thank you for hearing, hearing our thoughts and concerns about this. And I think mine's somewhat been alleviated, because we have a little more detail here than what we had before. In our previous meeting, we didn't see quite the detail on the retention ponds. I live north there, so all this water flows through me and a neighbor of mine. So naturally, we're a little concerned about long-term in worst-case scenarios. So I think some of that's been alleviated here a little bit in that regard. And there's eight retention ponds, and is that what I heard, eight on the deal? So anyway, that's the concern on that long-term, and so thank you for hearing that. I guess the only question I have long-term is, is we build these retention ponds now, and then we develop the land, there's X percent silting or whatever goes in there. What, over time, if we look five or 10 years down the road, what mechanism is there to ensure that the capacity of those retention ponds is the same five, 10, 15, 20 years from now? That is, that was there when it was designed and built? So that's my concern, because I'm the recipient of the water downstream. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Are there any other audience comments? Seeing none, is there any other questions by commission for staff or the applicant?
Sure, I'll ask a question. I think it looks like a nice design, but was it designed with the widening of these two roads in mind? Or, because, you know, where you could put in a trail system, if you widen the road, that gets wiped out if it wasn't already planned for.
Yes, as a part of the preliminary plat, we've added additional right-of-way for the expansion that the city required. So we've already shown that additional right-of-way on both streets.
Thank you.
I could be mistaken, but this Rock Creek, I believe, is on a section line, and there is a state law that unless otherwise, there's variances or legal actions taken, there is usually 33 feet, 30, 33 feet on either side of the middle of the road, which is enough to make every road four lane. So technically, they may be owning the land, but there's already a given easement that allows it to be a road. That even applies places where there isn't roads, where it's just land, if it's on those section lines. So that is a provision that has been a very longstanding part of state code and state laws that allow roads to be up to a certain range. And that's come up before with planning commission, as we've closed some of those roads that go through here locally and then have judicial action following, so.
I'd just like to point out, you are right on the 33-foot statutory right-of-way. The city of Norman actually requires 50 feet each side. So we provide that additional 17 feet on both of the roads. And then if you look at the intersections, you can see we actually provided additional width in there for future turning lanes when they do the expansion.
I have a question as long, oh, go ahead.
Just to address the comment on there, they may not have to condemn, long story short. They may already have an easement by right, that they don't have to go make other action to use, so.
Just to address the second concern regarding long-term detention, can you just, can you address that?
Yeah, the green areas that we've got, the detention ponds, he mentioned retention pond. Retention pond holds water all the time. We've got one of those down in the southwest corner. The other ponds will be detention ponds, they're dry most of the time. And again, we're following these natural riparian areas, where you see the trees through there. And we did it on the project next door, Montecito Ranch, where we just come through in a couple of places, and we build a dam across those low areas, and so that acts as a tension when the rain comes. So there shouldn't be a whole lot of silt going into there. But there is an HOA in place, and they will be responsible for the detention ponds if there are any issues.
I definitely also hear the concern about the headlights. Is there any elevation or light, anything that is happening with the exit there that might alleviate anything or any other provisions for that?
Well, the reason that the entrances are located where they are, those are the high points on the road, and that's where you want your entrances coming in for safety reasons, for sight, sight distances coming over those hills. So that's why they're located where they are.
What about on the actual drive, though? Would there be a way to maybe, I don't know, angle the egress in any way that might help keep these from shining into someone's house, for example?
Yeah, I don't know that it would make that much of a difference, because at some point, you've got to come down level with the road that you're turning on, so.
Any other questions for staff or discussion? I also did not know retention held water and detention was dry. I learned that today, so I've learned a few things today. It was very helpful. If there's.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Getting ahead of your sentence there, sorry.
Oh, no, it's great.
Oh, point of order. Sorry, did we have a discussion?
We, yeah, we're in, yeah, we have a motion that has been made, but has not been seconded.
If we want to continue discussion, that's fine, I can withdraw the motion.
Or we can, we can actually, if we haven't seconded it, we can just never give you a second on it, too. So we can still just.
Don't ever give me a second.
We're being a little casual tonight to get the most discussion out.
I'll add some discussion. I like it, you know, to piggyback on what I was saying about infill. This looks like rural infill in a way, and I like the accessory dwelling units. I think there's a lot there. Some of the questions about parks did give me pause. The properties are a large size. If I think about an individual home, there's plenty of space. But I think that parks add more than just, they go beyond, you know, it's about building a community. And so I do think that's one thing that's missing, is the community aspect of what a park adds. So I agree that, I agree, there is plenty of space in a yard. You can put up your own basketball goal or whatever, but you're still missing that community aspect of. And I live in a neighborhood, we're very fortunate, we can walk a quarter mile to our park. And sometimes our neighborhood has food trucks and stuff, and they'll come out, and, you know, you meet people you wouldn't otherwise meet. So there is something lost when we do fee in lieu of park.
To that extent, also on the fee in lieu comment, I think a lot of why they get offered so much, and maybe speaking out of turn, but the, the cost of once, you can dedicate land to a park, but then the city has the responsibility of maintaining said park. So for every new park we add, and this might be a Jim Griffith point that could really add a little bit more context to, but we add more budget item every time. So for every park we came in, and I know recently, we've had some trouble keeping certain parks in town clean as they were vandalized and constantly getting replaced. And there is an economic cost to the city, which is where some of the fee in lieu comes from of that. And just a point for things that I've enjoyed seeing in some of the applications we've seen recently is private open space that kind of functions like that, thinking of the Franklin Woods project, that kind of has some mirroring elements of this green space with the WQPZ zone. Probably got my acronym wrong, but, I mean, I think that there are some ways to still have some of those open space, even if they're not necessarily a community gathering amenity, like in a way that a park is, and that, like maybe you're saying. I think there's two aspects of parks to that. You have the community gathering components, and then you also have the open space. And I do think there's some good open space and some good natural, going to stay the way it is, which is actually something even our parks don't typically incorporate. So I think there is some good green space in this project, even if not necessarily that community driving focal point, so. Jimmy, you want to talk about parks a little?
Not really, but that was an issue when I was on Parks Board. I mean, we have a very generous park land requirement when development is platted. So there is a finite amount of money, and so while the Parks Department is more than glad to have the park, they are often very reticent about being able to take care of it. So, so I appreciate the consideration for a half acre park is not a practical thing to do, so anyway.
I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Jablonski's brief comment about ADUs. I think the inclusion of that, very in support of that. I'd love to see more and more of that. I'm glad that we've seen a few recent developments that have incorporated that. There's a lot of discussion about, or that will likely be coming within the next year or so, about ADUs and incorporating those into existing neighborhoods. And so love seeing that proposed as part of new neighborhoods, so I want to commit that.
Oklahoma City is undergoing a new planning, an entirely new plan. And one of the, one of the main things they are looking at is adding ADUs by right for all residential, which is not to say they couldn't be CCR'd out, but that is something that is maybe a trend in our entire metro. Even if, you know, even taking out nationwide, and we're just looking at more of a microcosm of where we live, I think that's coming up a lot more, too. So generational housing and affordability and, and seeing those and just being thoughtful of how they get incorporated in, I think is important, so.
That ties in a lot to the health of your citizens, to be able to do that, to age near family rather than being placed in a home as a solution. So I would highly support something similar in Norman.
Which I think is why it was always part of the residential estates. I know mobile homes, I mean, that doesn't necessarily sound great, but, you know, ADUs in general don't always have to be a mobile home. And I think the project we saw earlier today that Keith McCabe had developed, and has since sold, but he's got that smaller garage apartment that had its own separate access, that had some synergy and tie-in with the original building. I think there's some very classy ways to do it, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I empathize with, you know, the uncertainty and not understanding why infrastructure sometimes on road widening and whatnot, why sometimes it happens before a neighborhood and why sometimes it doesn't. And, and I think a lot of that ties to that federal funding. I live out by the lake, Lake Thunderbird, and for nearly a year, I think it was short of a year, Alameda was shut down. And with that widening, there is a quarter-mile section that has a turn lane that you can't turn into an intersection that got added, or into a neighborhood, because it's backyards. And you can't turn into the field that is not yet developed. And I have not seen plans for development being on planning commission. So sometimes it doesn't make sense, but it's designed to be widened as more, as population grows in an area. And so they needed to do it, and the turn lane that makes no sense is really a placeholder for additional growth that is yet to come, on trend with what has happened. So he's saying five years, you're seeing all of these lots. They are not going to build all at the same time. I think at the point that the road gets widened in this area, in this case, it will seem more intuitive and timely. At least that is my hope. So I just wanted to let you know, I empathize with that uncertainty and, and the fear, but, but just. Yes, yes. But also, you will have additional residents that have the same, like, okay, I have to go six miles around another way to get to where I'm going, when they do widen it. So that's, that's the flip side of that coin, but it'll be beautiful when it's done, whenever that is.
Point of order.
Yeah, go for it.
I believe that audience comments are over.
And they are, yes. Also, just making another comment, that there is also after this, a city council meeting. So if you are unhappy with any results or would like additional voices, you have publicly elected officials and your city council members. They all have their addresses, emails that you can visit with in advance. They will read all your protest letters, just as we did. And you can also have an additional public comment point there, too. So just other places besides this meeting, that if you did not feel heard and want more voice, contact your city council member or members and visit with them, because they would be the next person that sees this project, so. Okay. Any other discussion by commission? We had a motion for a vote.
Second.
Oh, there we go. Okay, and we'll take a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Moving through quite a few next items, I'm going to read items 14, 15, and 16 together. Item 14, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R-2324-64. Development Group LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from low-density residential designation to commercial designation, and for future urban service area to current urban service area for approximately 10.02 acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of 36th Avenue Northwest and Franklin Road. Item number 15, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2324-23. Alliance Development Group LLC requests rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural District and PUD Planned Unit Development O-0910-14 to PUD Planned Unit Development for approximately 369.74 acres of property generally located at east of 48th Avenue Northwest, south of Indian Hills Road, north of Franklin Road, and west of 36th Avenue Northwest. Item number 16, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of. Item number 16, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash 2324 dash 8. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Raven Investments LLC, SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Bridgeview at Carrington, a planned unit development for approximately 369.74 acres of property generally located at east of 48th Avenue Northwest, south of Indian Hills Road, north of Franklin Road, and west of 36th Avenue Northwest. This applicant has requested postponement to the November 9th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion with that date of November 9th of 2023 or otherwise?
Move to accept the postponement till November 9th.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
Moving on to items 17, 18, and 19. 17, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R dash 2324 dash 25. Shaz Investment Group LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from country residential designation to commercial designation and removal from special planning area 6, SPA 6, community separator for 35.56 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. Item number 18, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 9. Shaz Investment Group LLC requests rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural District to CR Rural Commercial District for 35.56 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. And item number 19, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash 2324 dash 1. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Shaz Investment Group LLC, Crafton Toll for Shops at Indian Hills for 156.91 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. The applicant has requested postponement to the November 9th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there a motion for that one? For those items?
Move to postpone those items to the November 9th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting.
I second it.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
And reading items 20, 21, and 22 together. Item 20, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R dash 2324 dash 26. Shaz Investment Group LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from country residential designation to commercial designation and removal from special planning area 6, SPA 6, community separator for 22.51 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. Item number 21, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 10. Shaz Investment Group LLC requests rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural District to CR Rural Commercial District for 22.51 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. And item number 22, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash 2324 dash 2. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Shaz Investment Group LLC, Crafton Toll for Indian Hills Market for 93.94 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of Indian Hills Road and 12th Avenue Northeast. The applicant has requested postponement to the November 9th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Could I have a motion?
I move to postpone to the November 9th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
Getting to something interesting, item number 23, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 14. An ordinance of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 533 FH Flood Hazard District of the zoning ordinance to revise and add definitions to subpart C definitions to allow for cumulative costs to be accounted for in determining substantial improvements and to define market value and providing for the severability thereof. And we will take the staff and applicant presentation.
Good evening. Jason Murphy, Stormwater Program Manager, City of Norman. Let me get to my. Am I going the right way or the wrong way? So many, so many slides. There we go. Alrighty. Again, I'm Jason Murphy. Here to, for consideration of an ordinance amendment to the floodplain ordinance for the City of Norman, specifically related to substantial improvement, substantial damage. Language that is in the flood hazard ordinance currently. And just for clarity, substantial improvement, substantial damage only applies to existing non-conforming structures. It does, makes no difference for any new development whatsoever. This is going to be those older houses or older structures that were built before flood hazard ordinance existed. Currently, the city of, the city's flood hazard ordinance includes language related to substantial improvement, substantial damage. It states that any cost to repair or improve a structure in the floodplain that exceeds 50% of the value of the structure is considered substantial improvement and therefore requires that the structure be brought into full compliance with all current flood hazard ordinance requirements. The proposed cumulative substantial improvement language would require that the cost of repairs or improvements would be calculated over a 10-year period for determining if the threshold for substantial improvement has been. In addition to changes in the definition of substantial improvement, two new definitions would be added to the ordinance to clarify market value and define cumulative cost and how they are calculated. The following example demonstrates the effects of the ordinance, the ordinance revision. If there's an existing non-conforming house in the floodplain that has a market value of $100,000 and the owner applies for a floodplain permit to renovate portions of the structure for a total cost of $25,000, the result would be a 25% cost of improvements to the structure. And two years later, that same house, for whatever market reasons, is now worth $125,000. If there's a flood that causes damage to that structure, the owner comes to get a floodplain permit and the repair costs are $35,000, that would result in an additional 28% cost of improvements to the structure. The combined cost of the improvements is 53% of the market value of the structure in that two-year period. Under our existing requirements, the structure would not be required to come into compliance with the flood hazard ordinance, either by floodproofing, raising, or otherwise mitigating the flood risk for that structure. With the cumulative substantial improvement, substantial damage requirements, a permit could not be granted unless the structure was renovated in such a manner as to make it compliant with the flood hazard ordinance and therefore help mitigate the flooding risk. So going to the slides. The language changes in here are in red on the slide. I will say that the language, whenever we modified the ordinance and ran it through our legal department, the language is coming from FEMA CRS handbook, which kind of defines how we do these things. As well as, I went out and looked at Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Midwest City, Dell City, who has some similar language. So we're not reinventing the wheel. This isn't something that's new in Oklahoma. This is something that is done elsewhere in, in the state. So looking specifically at the first would be changing the definition of substantial improvement to mean any combination of repairs, reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure. Sorry. The cost of which equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure before start of construction of the improvement. This includes structures that have incurred substantial damage regardless of the actual work performed. The cost used in the substantial improvement determination shall be the cumulative cost of all previous improvements for a specific building or structure during the immediate past 10-year period. And then the two exemptions still apply, which are basically any improvement that's being made to bring it into compliance with health codes or any kind of historic structure. That wouldn't change. And then the next definition that would be added would be market value. This, so market value would mean for purposes of determining substantial improvement, the value of a structure and any attached improvements. The assessed value of a structure as determined by the Cleveland County Assessor shall be presumed to be the market value unless evidence of an alternative valuation is presented to and accepted by the floodplain permit committee, such as appraisal. The floodplain permit committee is ultimately responsible for determining the market value of a structure, although an appeal can be made to the board of adjustment if there's concerns with that. And then the last definition would be cumulative cost, which is the sum of the cost of repairs, construction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure divided by the assessed market value of a structure at the time that a cost is incurred and is calculated over the immediate past 10-year period. With that. Go back this way. So we put this language together, got it approved by City Legal. We sent it to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and FEMA for, for them to approve it and make any recommendations. They had none. They approved it. And we went to the floodplain permit committee, which approved it unanimously in August, August 21st. We're here tonight. If you guys approve it, we will then take it to city council in November for first and second reading. And then it would become part of the ordinance 30 days following second reading. With that, does anyone have any questions?
So the last change that we did, we made pretty significant improvements to people's flood insurance premiums that, in a similar ordinance to this. And this would also be improving our rating, if I read that correctly.
So, yes.
And would that have a net effect of reducing, potentially reducing premiums on flood insurance?
This action by itself, no. The way the CRS program works, so the community rating service system, which is what we have, we're currently a, a six on the scale, but it's a point system and you earn points doing different things. So as you perform these activities and basically higher standards for everything in the floodplain, it's a cumulative point system. This particular action would give us more points. It would not be enough to move us to the next tier down. It's about 25% of, of a tier. But this, you know, along with other things we could do, could move us down to a five, which would in, mean a 5% decrease in flood insurance costs citywide. So there's the benefit, aside from getting these structures that are, you know, just out of compliance and just kind of kicking the can down the road and not being improved. We're getting that, but there's also benefits citywide in terms of our CRS rating and potential decreases to our flood insurance cost.
Are there any, do you have like a list of how many properties might be affected about this getting implemented? Do we have like a certain number of homeowners or property owners, I'll say, that are going to be impacted by this change?
I, no, I, I don't have a list of, to be honest, for the most part, this is fairly small areas. There's a lot of things along Imhoff Creek. I mean, specifically what brought this about was on LaHoma, we had a structure that flooded. Somebody, the owner came and got a permit. Did, you know, $20,000, $25,000 worth of repair, literally flooded the next year. Had another, you know, $25,000 worth of repair, so. And no mitigation was being done. It was just cleaning up and doing, and like I said, kicking the can down the road instead of actually improving. The other consideration for us, and the reason this was requested by the floodplain permit committee and, and some citizens actually, is most of these homes that this would be affecting aren't, the homeowner is not who lives in the home. Most of these are, are development, you know, the houses that this is affecting in a, in a lot of cases are people who aren't even in Norman. These are rental homes, specifically that have students or lower income houses. Your nice houses aren't in floodplains and have been for a significant period of time. On LaHoma specifically, lots of houses have already been renovated. But in this case, we're finding homes that you're having that damage, that person's doing the bare minimum they need to do to get that house livable. They're selling it to the, to the next company and that sort of thing. And that's why this has been brought up. In terms of number of houses, I, it's not a lot, but there are some areas that it would affect more than others.
It would be particularly within floodplain or I guess that would be zone, would it be X? It wouldn't be any X, it'd be AE or?
Could be zone A or zone AE.
Okay.
So most, again, most of the ones that we're seeing here, honestly, you're, like I said, along flood avenue or along LaHoma, not only are they in the floodplain, they're in floodway. So the elevating of these houses is honestly like a four or five foot to get them above the base flood elevation for that area. But no, zone X would not apply or anything in the 500 here. This is 100 here and.
Any other questions for staff? I kind of jumped in first, so. My only concerns is if we have an immediate implementation. I, I see the need for not continuing to never make improvements, but the grandfathering in. And we talk about this, we've talked about this about other projects tonight and what this could potentially impact with some property owners, you know.
Were anyone, any homeowners in zone A and AE that would potentially be impacted by this notified that this was here? I would assume we would have a list of those residents.
Well, we did notifications, obviously, for the floodplain permit committee, as well as there are notifications that go out for planning commission. And it will be done again before.
Yeah, just making sure it wasn't just like a public notice, like they got specific notifications.
No.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Just something to think about, maybe if, seeing if a report could be generated for city council, you know, that kind of had identified maybe in their first reading or something in their packet that showed maybe some specific houses that potentially could be impacted. So there was an idea to know, is this five houses? Is this 50? Is it 500? You know, kind of.
Right.
Helps, I think, for perspective, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, we can definitely do that. That's something we can look at. But again, like I said, technically the language is already there. It's just, and again, it, it's preventing that just coming right in under the wire and a couple of years later doing another improvement that's under the wi. It's, the ultimate goal is to get these properties into compliance or get them to have mitigation occur so that flooding doesn't keep happening, especially in rental properties and things like that. The property owner's collecting insurance and you've got a renter who now has lots of property damage that you may or may not be covered, so.
We've had homeowners that are, and property owners, I'll say, because it's not always a home, but property owners that are affected by Bishop Creek in particular and developments around Bishop Creek. And I'd be interested to know if they would be in any way potentially benefited from this, so, or harmed, I guess.
If they have to get a floodplain permit and they, like I said, they were existing non-conforming structure, then yes, they could potentially affect them.
I'll just make a comment. I am not in the floodway, but I am about 12 houses away from the houses on LaHoma that have seen those incremental improvements and seen that over the last 10 years since we've been living there. And so I do think it's been an issue and I'm glad that it's getting tightened up there, so.
Any other questions or discussion or audience comments? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
Last, non-consent item, consideration of appro, item 24, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash 2324 dash 24. An ordinance of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36 dash 552 screening of chapter 36 zoning of the code of the City of Norman to allow for administrative review and approval of requests for variations in fence height in the A1 General Agricultural District, A2 Rural Agricultural District, and RE Residential Estate Dwelling District and providing for the severability of thereof. We'll take our staff slash applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jane Hudson, Planning Director. So tonight we're going to discuss chapter 36, fencing walls and screening. We, so currently the ordinance states that fencing may not project into any required front setback line unless such fencing is less than four feet in height. One of the reasons for that is when you're backing out of your driveway and you need to see, you know, if somebody's coming down the street, you, you don't want a fence blocking your vision there. So you can see the cars coming and going, right? So you, you see that more in the urbanized area, R1, very, you know, more dense developed areas. areas. So some of the unintended restrictions for the, for the certain districts that we are looking at tonight, so the properties that are in the following zoning districts, the A1, A2, and RE, they're very limited when wanting to fence their property. You know, on average, the, the setbacks for A1 are 25 feet, A2, 50 to 100 feet from the center line of the road. And then for RE, you're looking at another 50 feet. And this is where it becomes really important. So the typical parcel size, or I should say the minimum, so the minimum parcel size for A1 is going to be two acres. A2, it's 10 acres, and the RE dwelling district, those are two acres. We do have a lot of properties that are grandfathered in, and so in the A2, they might be eight acres or something like that. But there's always going to be a legal tract that we would be able to permit. But with this proposed amendment, what would happen is within the A1, the A2, and the RE district, the applicant or the property owner would be able to submit to city staff and ask for an administrative review of how they would like to put a fence, a gate forward of what would be the setback line. The Administrative Review Committee will be composed of the city engineer, traffic engineer, the building official, and the director of planning. And what we'd be looking at is the fence location and the height, the applicable, applicable codes and regulations, and then anything in the zoning ordinance and development codes that might impact this. This process, I mean, the way we wanted to set this up is it's going to essentially mirror what the lot line adjustment application is. However, there, there's no application fees associated with this with the lot line adjustment. It's $50 per lot, and then the applicant also has to deal with any survey or costs that they might have to get to, you know, create a lot or, you know, combine two lots. So I, you know, the hope is that this will allow residents to come in and put a wall, a fence forward of where their home is, if they're on two acres or five acres. You know, I mean, it can get expensive, I understand that, but we, we just want to give them the option to be able to do that should they want to. And this is the, the route that they would be able to go to get that approval. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have on this.
Any questions for staff? Any audience comments?
Any audience?
Any discussion?
I will say there, I had something, I, I paid a little bit of attention to which zoning codes this came up, because a friend of mine lives on Boyd Street and their neighbor put a 10-foot tall fence in. If you have jumping dogs, eight feet is not always enough for a good jumping dog to keep them in. So they had jumping dogs, they'd moved next door, installed a larger fence, but it was right up against her property line and curved around to the front also a little bit. And they ended up working it out, but it just kind of happened at her, and that was kind of what she, her main concern was. So I was like, oh, eight, you know, going from eight, eight feet to 10 feet, or six to eight, whatever. It was a two feet, that can go a big difference of two feet for both sides of that. But I think the type of nature of properties like this is a very different story, probably have more animals and things and maybe more privacy intended with the type of lots that these go along with, so. So I, I was in favor of it, so.
No, I'm, I'm very appreciative of it being out in, in A2. I can't imagine, I, this probably will put people in compliance that are not in compliance and unaware of it currently now in that area, thinking that like, there's, there's the expression of, I'm not in city limits, because, because we're not getting curbside cart service. There's this, there's lingo that's used inappropriately, you know, incorrectly. And so there's a lot of, oh, well, I don't live in the city, so that doesn't apply to me. But it's like, if, if your address ends in Norman, comma, Oklahoma, then it does apply to you. So I, I'm very supportive of it.
Any other discussion? I would take a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
All right, moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for the commission, such as any adjusted meeting times that we are aware of for next month?
Hi, Beth McCallas, Assistant City Attorney. This is just a fun fact based on something that happened tonight. It's actually proper Roberts rules for a motion and a second to be on the floor before you discuss. You don't do it that way. I understand why, because you might want to add conditions, you want to talk about it first. You don't have to do it that way. I just want you to know, it's never a problem to talk with a motion on the floor. It's usually the proper way to do it.
Okay, perfect.
So the only thing I wanted to add was, we are in the process of looking at adopting our master plans, our comprehensive plan, transportation, stormwater, water, parks was added. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to go to the aimnorman.com website. There are monthly questions. Right now, the three new questions that are up there is regarding housing. Every month, probably the, the second week of the, the month, they will update the questions because that's actually the week that the consultants will be back in town. We are, we've had two meetings with the steering committee. Again, we'll have another one in November, but just, you can go on there and you can sign up for emails, and you can get notifications for events that are going on. We're doing several pop-up events this weekend. And it's really just, we've got cards. I'd be happy to bring some to you next meeting. They have the QR code on them, and then you can just, you know, encourage people to go to the website, again, answer the questions, sign up for communication. And we also have comment cards that, you know, what's your big idea for Norman? What, what, what do you need to see? What is your concern? You know, and we're happy to take those. We're in the process, we're going to get a box and a banner out here in the lobby so that when people come in for meetings, they'll be able to put those comments in there and hopefully get the community more engaged as we move along in the process.
Awesome. I would love some of those pass along cards. That'd be great. I meant to bring in.
Norman Board of Realtors, actually, just in their own member group, passed along the AIM Norman. So I think there are people getting out there and just spreading the world, word on there, so.
Thank you.
All right, do commissions have any, commissioners have any comments to make?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to make, just kind of along the same lines, the, on November 7th and 8th, that is the final in-person Strong Towns wrap-up meeting that's going to be going on. And specifically, November 7th, which is a Tuesday, at 3:30 PM, that's the wrap-up briefing for the leadership team, which technically includes the Planning Commission. So just encourage anybody who's available, 3:30, November 7th, to attend that because there, I think there's going to be discussion of ADUs, there's going to be some, some other discussion of things that will likely be items that, I'm not going to say items, but potential policy that we'll be seeing over the next couple of years. So be good to kind of hear that on the front end. So specific agenda to be determined, but just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, so.
We can, do you want us to send out a meeting request so it'll be on everybody's calendar? If they want to come, they can. Are you doing that?
That would be great. If you, if you could do that, that would be great. Yeah, there, there are four different groups that have to send out calendar invites too. So if that's one we can handle, that would be, if staff can handle the big grid, so.
11:07 at 2:30.
11:07 at two, at 3:30.
3:30, so.
In here?
Here.
Okay, all right. We'll get ready. Just send that out.
Great. Any other comments?
One more. You know, just going back to some comments I made about heat and, and trees, you know, we have a, we have, you know, some boards that give advice on parks, some boards that give advice on green belts. But looking into the future, 30-plus years, heat is a real problem that we need to think about, and we have no advisory board to give us ideas. And the way cities are designed, you know, have a big impact on heat. How a city's designed, you can design it so that you, you drop the heat by five to 10 degrees or increase it if there's a lot of concrete. And so this is something that's going to be on my mind, you know, how much, wow. That's it. That's my comment. Thanks.
Good one. And I appreciate everybody. We feel like we've gotten a lot more discussion as we've gone on, and it's been a strong group. So I really appreciate everybody making comments and engaging, and it's been nice. It's been nice hearing more things, so.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just realized. So did, you all saw my email about next month's meeting being long meeting?
Yes.
So we'll buy you dinner if you want. We'll send out an email in advance, figure out, okay.
And do we know if our time is going to be?
I never turn down free food.
Do we know if the time's going to be any bit adjusted for that one yet? I know there were some initial ones we talked about for this one before.
I need to see what's going on before. We have our council committee meetings before them, so let me see what we've got going on, or I'll let you guys know.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, call it adjourned. Thank you.
See you all next month. I sent everything. Bring the jolly.
All right, I'm going to see if somebody.